United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on the agenda, we have our awards. Not a lot of them yet. Great meeting. Okay, so the first group that we are going to honor tonight are our middle school girls cross-country team. So this is a team that usually, again, I'm sure you've heard, you are the sport that most other people punish their athletes with, right? You have killed it this year, and so we are really proud of you and have worked really hard as a team to better your scores. So, coaches have given me a little bit of information to brag on y'all a little bit. So, the Belmont girls team had a very strong regular season, winning the Salina and Belmont Invitationals. They were runner-up at the South Adams Invitational, where they hit the state standard time and set the school record for fastest girls team averaging 12 minutes 12 seconds per runner, and beating the previous best by nine seconds per runner, which is awesome for each one of you. Despite it being the hottest race of the season, so we did have a really hot August and September, right? Maybe tough, right? And coming off a tough conference meet, just days prior, the middle school girls team finished fourth out of the field of 46 teams and 457 runners in the small school division to earn a spot on the state championship podium and an all-state distinction. So, for going to state and representing so well, ladies, that was amazing. We have some certificates for that, and so we're going to start out with Savannah Zimmerman, who was 26. We'll have her line up. So Savannah placed 26. She ran a 11 minute 56 second, which was just .89 seconds from being an All-Star medalist. So, great job, Savannah. Next, we have Charlotte Glenn. And she placed 73rd with 12 minutes 31 seconds. Next, we have Addie Miller. Addie placed 117th with 12 minutes 59 seconds. Bristol Sherry. She placed 144th with 13 minutes 13 seconds. Linda Lee. She placed 212th with 13 minutes 41 seconds. And Kenley Gleason. She placed 241st with 13 minutes 51 seconds. And we have Kay Radecki. We're going to talk about a couple of things, stay up here, Kay. So Kay placed 12th overall, again, of 457 runners with a time of 11 minutes, hold on your time, 35 seconds. And so Kay was also our all-state medalist, and she came in, she was coming off a sixth grade season where she had swept cross-country, the mile, and the 800 meter, and in the NE8 Championships, our conference, and showing a lot of growth in your mental toughness and having to figure out how to battle all season. You won three Invitationals, set the all-time Belmont record of 11 minutes 13 seconds, and finished 12th at the state meet, improving your place from last year where you also qualified. So Kay. Christie here tonight, and Christie, coach, come on up. Christie Blythe is our girls' coach. Do you want to talk about, about the girls and how hard they were?
It was definitely a fun season. I loved coaching each and every one of them, so it was an awesome, awesome season.
Yes. I'm sure you guys supported each other and pushed each other hard.
It was a great time.
So, again, do you have anything that you can give as what you would say is sage advice in all your seventh grade, seven years of school here, about what it takes to really achieve that? And, again, you're in a sport that's hard to persevere through, right? What would you say? Have any advice? Keep running. Well, they're quiet, they have their nose down. Well, ladies, congratulations. Our boys team also did really well, and the BMS boys team were our first conference champions in school history at middle school level, and were just one second away from being the fastest team in school history. So, great job, guys. At the state meet, they competed in the field of 584 runners. I can't even imagine running in with that big a crowd. And 62 teams in the small school division, and a hard-fought victory to earn 10th place overall, which was still extremely commendable. We had a couple gentlemen distinguish themselves in that meet, and is only, are only one of them?
Yeah, Frank isn't here.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about the gentleman who is here, so Emmett Glenn, come on up. So Coach Ayers tells me that you didn't even know you were a runner before all these guys. He just caught him at lunch one day and said, "I know you, and you need to run cross-country." Boy, was he right. So, eighth grader Emmett Glenn and Frank Hyman, who can't be here tonight, were both team captains and finished individually as champion and runner-up champion at the NE8 meet, beating the rest of the field by 30 seconds.
Wow.
Both finished in the top 25 to earn all-state distinctions. Emmett, you were the small school state individual champion with a time of 9 minutes 55 seconds, only nine seconds off your best time of 9 minutes 45 seconds, which was the all-time Belmont record. So, congratulations. Frank was 7th overall. Stay up there for a minute. Frank, even though he can't be here, we're going to say he was 7th overall and nearly set his personal best despite really hot conditions at state, right? So, do you have any? I'm going to put you on the spot. Commentary about what it takes to be great at what you choose to do?
What it takes to be great? I mean, there's a bunch of factors, but I'd say you have to have a good team, I think you have to have your friends on there, have to have amazing coaches, and I would say your relationship with God is the most important.
Great, great. We're very proud of you, Emmett. Thank you. And Coach Ayers can come out behind his communications director spot for a moment. Thank you, Justin, you've done a great job. Do you have anything you want to say about your team, or Emmett and Frank in particular?
Yeah, I'll say something about the girls first. We had a big goal that we did not achieve at a conference meet, and I was really, really scared going into state because Iowa was where they might just pack their bags and fold it in, and from the gun, they were just completely different people. The best thing about these girls is that they're not just fast. Every girl up here has been a student of the month at some point at Belmont, or a Saint Joe, or makes the honor roll consistently, so they are outstanding people. Yeah, I'm really nervous right now. They're just outstanding people, and like, to put in perspective how great this girls' team is, like, they would have made the high school regional, that's how gifted they are as athletes, and maybe not, you know, on state yet, but, I mean, considering you guys are pretty much seventh graders and eighth graders, like, you guys can do great things. They care about their legacy and what they mean to Belmont and the school, and you don't see that much among kids there, so it's awesome. Emmett, I could say a lot of, I don't really need to say much because I think you already know, you know what I mean? I admire you so much just as a human being. The best thing I know about Emmett is that the kid wins the state championship, and instead of celebrating, he circles back to all his disappointed teammates to make sure they're okay, and that was unbelievable. You're just a great human. I admire you and your relationship with the board so much, and so, congratulations, you deserve it. You guys are really great.
We are very proud of all of you who represented Belmont well, your families well, our community well, so congratulations, and we look forward to seeing what happens next season, right? So, as much as you guys are welcome to stay, because our meetings are thrilling, right? If you have other things that you need to get to, you're more than welcome. So, Justin does want to take a picture, where do you want to do that, Justin?
I have no idea.
Is it dark now?
Let's do... Yeah, girls, you just want to stand up there in the corner of the center.
Just go to center.
Yeah, Emmett, stand in the middle, it'll be perfect. All hold up, like, where Charlotte has it, kind of try to keep it at that level. So Savannah? All right, three, two, one, look at me.
Thank you, Ganna, thank you for coming, folks. All right. We'll move on to consensus items. Okay, consensus items. I don't have a whole lot to say, except that I did want to note that we have sixth-grade girls and boys basketball back on the schedule after several years of not being able to do that, and we are very thankful for the folks who have agreed to coach it. Abby Bowers is coaching the girls, and Justin Linger is coaching the boys, so we're excited to have that back on our roster. Also want to say a big thank you to Ramon Fabriano. Ramon has been with us on and off for a lot of years as custodian, and he is always a very welcoming and positive gentleman, and we want to wish him his official retirement and wish him the best. He's retired from here one other time and came back, so hopefully he gets to truly retire this time. Any questions or comments or questions to approve?
Motion by Joel. Joel, is there a second? I know, I don't know why it's just all Joel. Second by Darlene. Motion by Joel, second by Darlene to approve the consensus items as presented, all was in favor, now it's by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, same sign, approved 6 to 0. Next up, we have a program update with Sean Faro, Tim Myers, and Erin Baker to talk about girls wrestling.
So this was at a different point in your agenda, but since tonight is the start of the girls' basketball season, Erin asked if you could try to move them and put them and Sean up on the agenda. So, I know that all three of them have different pieces they want to add to this, but you do have a packet in front of you that Erin kind of put together for some basic information about consideration to add a girls' wrestling team. It's now at a high HSA sanction.
Correct, yeah. So I'll just start with just the proposal to add this, much like the boys volleyball that we did last spring, we'd do a three-year trial, let's see how things go, see where our participation is, see how it works with our boys team. But while I think boys volleyball was impactful, I think girls' wrestling has a potential be bigger, more impactful, just because there's only two sports in the winter with basketball and swimming, so this is another opportunity to get a whole new group of girls that aren't participating in something right now, to find something that they can be passionate about and successful in. And following in the footsteps of, as Kim says, one of our flagship programs, the boys' wrestling team, you know, I think, I think it has great potential to be very successful. Did a call-out meeting in November, Sean kind of ran that, so I'll let him talk about the numbers and the interest that we showed, but at this point in time, I would like to try and get this for next, next winter, have a team up and going and participating in some weeks next winter, if we can potentially do that. So, three-year trial, we're going to just to see how it jives with the boys' team, see what our interest is, all of those kinds of things. The last thing I wanted to do is affect our boys' program, so I don't think it will. I think we have support from our guys' wrestling team, so that's, that's just something that we want to watch in this trial here to see how things go. So, excited to get it going, hopefully we can start competing in that as well.
And you have had a parent, at least a parent, reach out to you?
Yes, yeah. She's a current eighth grader, so will be in high school next year, very passionate about it. Tim and Sean could probably talk more about her, but she's always in the wrestling room, always competing, she's going to different tournaments, successful as far as I know, so very passionate about it. As a matter of fact, she wasn't the best of students and didn't particularly like to come to school, bad wrestling, and loves, loves, loves school, understands the impact that wrestling has done for her, turned her grades around, so it's a, it's a wonderful success for her, so, yeah.
And could you talk just briefly about how many other schools in our conference area have?
All of our other conference schools have girls' wrestling, so we are the only NE8 school that doesn't have social South Adams, do not, but we are the only NE8 school that does not have girls' wrestling at this point in time. Norwell is starting it this winter, so they were, they and us were the last two, so we've had female wrestlers before, right? Correct, yeah, correct. Three, four years ago.
Can you explain that a little bit now that it's sanctioned by the IHSA, what new restrictions are put on for this?
So, yeah, they have to compete on a girls' team only if you were grandfathered in or wrestled in the state tournament. Two years ago, I think you were grandfathered in last year, but I think now this year, everybody has to wrestle in the girls' tournament. And they have a separate state tournament, they have separate meets, they have separate invites, so they will have to compete at the girls' level. So, numbers-wise, it's kind of, I mean, two for sure, so that they can practice against each other, but would certainly like to have more than that, you know, find another coach that can be responsible and coach them while the guys can still do their thing. We're going to have to be creative with the room at this point in time, depending on how many numbers there are, but, you know, I think, I think we can work those kinds of things out, but they want to wrestle with girls. They can practice in the room with the boys at the same time, but when they're, when they're practicing whatever they need to, they need to have a girls' club. I'll let these guys kind of talk, Sean, talk about numbers, or Tim, but?
I would talk a little bit about, and this is one of the fastest growing sports, and I think one of the reasons was, we have had a couple of females truly wrestle. We've had, we've had more than a few dip their foot in water and try it, but it's really, it was really hard when they were competing with boys, against boys. It wasn't traditionally a female sport, and we've only had two girls that stuck it out and practiced in our room, they had each other, which luckily they had each other to wrestle with, but it was, it was really difficult on a lot of, from a lot of perspectives. One, we have a varsity wrestling team, a junior varsity wrestling team, and as long as we had two girls, when they started to have their own events, it's really hard to split the coaching staff, you know, three ways on some, on some given event. So, I really feel that girls' wrestling won't grow here if it doesn't have its own coach, if it doesn't have its own program. I, I don't, I don't think you'll, you'll see it grow. But it is growing because these opportunities are growing. So I think we're a wrestling interested community, we get a lot of support here. I think if we do have, they do have their own coach, and they do have their own practices, like Erin said, they can practice with us, but our rooms, like tonight, we're pretty full of running into each other already, it's, it's a hard situation to do that. So if we, we have, you know, if they have their own program, I think it can really take off. We did a call-out meeting, well, there's more meeting, national meeting, six, seventh, eighth grade, the girls' team then is with their sixth grade lunch group and the seventh grade and eighth grade, and they met with one of our former students, Andrea Hernandez, she wrestles at Indiana Tech, she's a senior there, she's wrestled for four years there. One of her teammates, Aubrey Coons, came and spoke to the girls, and I thought they did a great job. They talked about what wrestling has meant to them, they talked about, really especially that wrestling is for everybody, they talked about body, they showed the girls on their team that, you know, they have a 100-pounder, and they have a 205-pounder, I think is their highest weight class, and they talked about the girls on their team being from all different walks of life and backgrounds and body shapes and sizes, and I think the girls that they talked to really got excited about that. Like Erin said, there's basketball, and there's swimming, and there's some girls that I'm sure feel left out, like, I'm not built for that, I'm not built for that, and there were a lot of these girls that were really excited. So we haven't done our high school call-out meeting yet, but middle school, Kim, I sent you the list of girls, I think there were close to 50 girls, probably more sixth graders than seventh graders, more seventh graders than eighth graders, they're probably a little more set in what they're already doing, but one of the questions, well, set of questions we asked them was, would you be interested in finding out more about wrestling? Andrea and her teammate offered to do some camps throughout the year, they're heading into their practice season right now, but they said they would come back and do some pre-camps, bring some more teammates with them, wrest, possibly wrestle in high school, and there were close to 50 girls that said, yes, we want to know more, we want to find out more, and that's just from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And obviously, we know all 50 of those girls are not going to come out and save the team, but it's, it has a lot of interest for our first time talking about this as a possibility, so it's pretty exciting.
And Andrea is interested in coaching, obviously, we would go through the whole process of interviews and post it in interviews and see, but she's certainly interested in coaching, wants to come back to Belmont and give to the program that was so impactful to her. So, she talked to the girls, that wrestling changed her life, it changed her, how she thought about herself, how she thought about life, how she, like, where she is, what she, you know, probably wouldn't have been able to travel all over the country and wrestle and make new friends, and when I, when we talked to her about, like, would you be interested in helping start it, she said it would be a dream come true. So, there is interest, obviously, there's a process for hiring and everything, but there's interest in somebody starting from there.
I would just add, I'm embarrassed to say that when these girls first came out for the middle school team, I'm talking Andrea and Trinity Coyne, I was not a big fan, and I will be honest about that, because I did not know that their intentions were the best. I thought that it was possibly some girls just wanting to be around the boys in this net, and it took them a while to win me over, but my goodness, did they win me over. And those girls, even though it was not sanctioned, ended up being multiple-time state placers, and even a couple years, but it was still big, it just wasn't sanctioned by the IHSA, it should have been. But those girls spent so much time in our room, even in the summertime, and as I said, they eventually won me over because they just kept doing what we were doing, and I did not see that coming. I thought, they're going to fizzle out once they break up with a boyfriend or something, like, they won't come, but they kept coming, and they kept coming, and they kept coming, and they proved that they wanted to do this sport, and what it did for their lives, they will tell, you know, it changed their lives. And their youth wasn't the easiest growing up, there were some hard-nosed girls who channeled that in a positive direction, and Trinity is now a firefighter, where is she?
I think, Hobart?
In Hobart, okay. And Andrea, her resume right now?
Oh my gosh, she's, she's, she's finishing her degree in criminal justice, 40 degree. She's been three times in a national tournament, she's been one match away from being an All-American, and just, I'm so proud of her.
Army, right?
What's that?
Army.
Oh, yes, and just, yeah, finished boot camp in AIT for Army National Guard. And leadership, she wouldn't want me bragging about the leadership awards that she won in the Army, and the great thing was, she told the girls, her Army training was easy after everything she'd done in wrestling. She may not want, like, I mean, it meant a lot to her in a lot of different ways.
So, it just, with those two, just proves that when they set their mind to it, what they can do, and they're, they have their picture hanging in our wrestling room, and it's pretty neat that they have their own two spots, and awful proud of them, and it's just neat, that's just a hint of what it could do for a lot of girls in the future.
How do you see the boys or grand girls or grandchildren?
Well, in the grand scheme of things, I love the idea because I think it helps everything with more people talking about wrestling indicator, they love it enough. I've asked, I don't know if I want to say majority, who knows, but I know there's so many people that love the sport, and then to have an additional group of kids, I think it's good for the community. How does it go hand-in-hand with our program? That, therein lies the question. I know you know, practice space is always a major concern for a lot of sports, brings on some ideas of what can be done, I don't know now the time and place for that, but...
But some of that's going to depend on numbers?
Correct, correct, yeah, and see how it evolves. I think initially, it can happen, but it, it's, I don't want to say it with the intensity.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the way it coexists is they're, they're, I think the programs support each other, I think as coaches, we're going to support the new coach coming in, talking about, they're going to have their own ideas of how they need to do things and work with, how we do things, how we recognize our kids, how we support them, how we recognize them, but I think if it is a matter of, I, I don't think it'll grow if it's just girls that have never done it getting thrown in with boys that are already intimidating. I think that the way they'll coexist is, they will have their own practices, and they will, it will be less intimidating for girls to come out and try a sport they've never done in front of boys that, I mean, I don't know, I just think that would be so intimidating. I don't know how we ever had two girls that got through it all the way like they did, I honestly don't know. That's one thing that impresses me about them, I don't think you would ever see that again. I think they were super unique, and I think for this to grow, will coexist supporting each other, but I think it will be its own program, I mean, it will.
They'll want to...
They're saying, they would like for you guys to build a good house.
We're absolutely...
That's not in your proposal.
I want to say thank you to Sean and Tim for coming, because I'm not so sure that in other schools that have been promoting this, that the boys' head coaches were coming in and advocating for the addition of that, so thank you for supporting it and seeing the value in it, and seeing how it can improve not only your program, but our community, our school. I appreciate your support.
I think, I want to say, I think something we talk about all the time at the schools is, the more kids that are involved in things, the better their experiences in the school, the more friends they have, the more positive they feel about their school environment, the better they do in their classroom, and if there is a group of girls that we're not reaching at this point already, this is a great opportunity.
Well, that was one of the questions we had with boys volleyball, I know, is, it's a sport of skilled athletes, from anyone, and then talking to you three, you weren't so sure it would really impact necessarily other women's sports, that this could just be a whole new faction of skilled athletes, potentially.
I hope so.
Okay, what's Trinity's last name?
Coyne.
Coyne, C-O-Y-N-E, okay. Andrea Hernandez, right?
Yes.
But what year did they graduate? When did they graduate? I'm told it's in 2022. But stay quiet.
Yep.
You guys have any questions?
You guys have any questions?
Do you have any female teams?
There aren't enough emails this year.
I just want to say, I think it's awesome you guys are supporting this, because the, I think the, you all see it through the boys program, but the, the way it helps build and develop people individually, like competing at that individual level, it's a whole different, I guess, degree of mental toughness they have to develop. And seeing that being available to our female students, I think is really important. And I think it's really, really great that you're supporting this and, and working towards it.
I should have brought Andrea's PowerPoint, but she used it with the girls. It had some, some really exciting video in there, too, that, but that's, that's exactly what she talked about. I think that's what appealed to most of the, most of the middle school girls was confidence, doing something that maybe they didn't even think was available for, or nobody else has, hasn't, hasn't already, hasn't already blazed that trail, you know?
It just took them under ten years to follow.
Sounds like nothing but positive, too. You're just bringing more students that haven't been reached already into something that involves deeper into their school. And doesn't pull students or athletes away from something else. I mean, it sounds fantastic.
Well, just build a mental toughness. And people, I wasn't a wrestler, but I can see it from the outside, just the mental toughness that you have to have to be able to compete in a sport like that, just to pay dividends in boys or girls regardless, so, yeah.
Do we need a motion tonight?
I would, I, if you're comfortable, if you want time to think about it, we can table it, talk this down. That's our two, but I know that I'm excited about it, and I'm sort of...
I'll make a motion that we approve the girls wrestling for the twenty-six, twenty-seven winter season.
Okay. Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Dave, to approve the development of the girls wrestling program for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. All those in favor, announce by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, sign. Approve six to zero. Thank you.
I second that. Thank you. I was going to say, Jim told me, and you know, he told me I can do this. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. Good luck to the girls tonight. I need a second. Oh, Erin, I did want you to, because this was going to be my superintendent report, but I thought it would be more perfect if I was going to talk about a couple of the athletic signers we had here recently from ball sports for next year, college next year. If you'd want to just...
Oh, yeah, we've got two that are signing the twenty-fifth. Mary Kate Scheinman is signing volleyball at Purdue. Mason Maybee is going swimming or diving at IU.
Also will.
So those two, they are signing, like I said, the twenty-fifth. And then we have two others that haven't set a timeline to do it yet. But Patty Knipstein's going to play soccer at St. Francis, and Bo Baker's going to go play baseball at Grace. Woo-hoo! So, yeah, those are the ones that I know of at this point in time, so.
Awesome.
We have, we had some, some exciting things going on. And, and you all saw the, the breakdown for the girls, our girls placed first place in all of all sports in Indiana was fantastic. Our girls were, I think, three points shy last spring of winning any outright all-girls sports, I think behind all of them. They won the all-girls, but pretty impressive. Very impressive.
Congratulations.
Very successful right now, so.
All right, so we get to move on to old business and policies. Second for you.
Oh, boy.
Yep. So I gave you a new packet. I will promise you, on my computer, this highlight was not the start. It was like, with red on, just, so, but these are the adjustments I made. Those are them in response to some of the conversations I've had with some of you. So on pages four and five, that one is no big surprise. What basically happens after you approve policies, I have to go back into Neola and create a disposition sheet for the viewers to change our existing policies. And so all these check marks and X's and things matter, so I wanted to make sure those X's were in place. We'd already talked about that's how we wanted it, so it seemed a little bit different. I just wanted you to know that's why I put that in. It's all right about this. Okay.
Just trying to save trees, anyway.
I don't think I saved any trees, though, because we went too soon. Okay, well, Darlene noted that there was a repeated sentence in fifty-one eleven, so that just was struck out, the repeated sentence was, so that's, no new news. On twenty-three forty, remember how long the field trip section was? On page ten, which we don't have, I originally just had checked that the athletic director would initially approve extracurricular and co-curricular. I talked more specifically to the principals, and the principals actually do the co-curricular, so I added a phrase that the athletic directors will do extracurricular and building administrators will approve co-curricular. So that was the addition there. I also talked a little bit more and thought a little bit more about the international travel section. I think it is prudent for, because we already had the responsibility that those trips are planned, only through a third-party travel agency. I think they need to be the ones collecting the money, too, so that X was in that option. Also, in field trips, I added that a student will never be denied or not be denied access to a trip that is part of a required curriculum for a course despite inability to pay, if there is a reasonable fee or whatever attached. There was a typo on page thirteen where the work coordination needed capitalized. And I also checked the option that any additional riders other than athletes and coaches on a bus, if a coach wanted to bring their elementary-age child or whatever to ride with them, that can only happen by approval of the principal, and that's more of an insurance. Then I think the only other thing that I remember was, or the policies about when we have DCS or law enforcement come to school, I did change one of the options that the school will attempt to notify parents immediately or as soon as possible before the end of the school day, or if it's a child parent. There were several parts about, basically, we will attempt to notify a parent, no matter who's coming, unless they are notifying them or we have been told they will interfere with the investigation. Oftentimes, that may happen with, like, DCS, if the parent is the one being investigated. So I know that was something that some of you had talked to me about wanting to make sure that parents were notified. And sometimes, some agencies, that's not their prerogative at that moment of the investigation, is to notify a parent if it's not legally required of them to do so, so that we will try to take that on. And I think that was really it. Were there any other questions? Or? And if not, you can adjourn a motion to approve the policies. Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jill. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Jill, to approve the policy updates as presented. All those in favor, announce by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, sign. Approve six to zero. Next, we have the ratification of the twenty-five, twenty-six master teacher contract. So I'm not going to go through a lot on this one, because we went through that presentation last month. So again, this is part of state law that we had to have the two meetings, one for public comment, and then this one is the actual ratification of the master agreement, native and with the teachers association, ratified at that time, October, and this is just last steps. I did have a question from somebody on the red line, that it appeared there might be a situation where someone wasn't getting a raise or stipend. Because there are some places that were skipped on the salary schedule, because we might not have someone that had twenty years experience, I didn't pay attention to what was on others, just striking out and tapping in information, because that's actually fairly cumbersome, but I appreciate your question. Everyone is getting a raise and/or stipend to the amount at least fifteen hundred dollars or more. Any other questions or comments? Motion to approve? Make a motion to approve? Motion by Jill, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jill. Motion by Jill, seconded by Jill, to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six teacher master contract. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Approve six to zero. Next is the approval of the twenty-six school resource officer MOU. So there really were no changes to the, to the actual agreement. The changes were all in the appendix, which is the financial estimation. And so again, that gets updated annually with whatever increases that the city gives the law enforcement officers. So again, the split is about, we pay around seventy percent of Officer Elbow or whomever our SORO is salaried, the city pays thirty percent. So for us this year, it's going to be about a forty-eight hundred dollar increase across the entire fiscal year. So money well spent, as far as I'm concerned. We have a great relationship with the Superior Police Department. Officer Elbow's doing a great job, taking a really, really forward stepping and getting, improving protocols and improving, I think, just preparedness between first responders and the school. And again, trying to get these fire EMS altogether and making sure that everyone kind of understands they're in lockstep, that there were a crisis situation, how everyone would be, what their responsibilities would be, what our responsibilities are, and so, and then just increasing the overall safety of the campus. He's probably taking the forward step. We're very happy with, with his work and more than happy to continue this agreement with the city. Any questions, comments, or motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Motion by Wiley, seconded by Dave, to approve the twenty-six school resource officer MOU. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Approve six to zero. Next is the review of the twenty-twenty-five funding floor teacher expenditure. So this is one of those state requirements. So there are two requirements in the state of Indiana regarding teacher compensation. And the first of them is the one that says the percent of your state revenue that you have to use minimally for a certain, the state definition of teacher. So it's not everyone we pay out of the education fund. It is only those staff who have a certain object code, and that means usually they are the ones that work directly with students in some form or capacity. So not everyone who's on a teacher contract gets into that, and they have added their benefits into that. The first year we were doing it, it was forty-seven percent, it was just salaries. Now they include insurance and things like that. So this past year, it was sixty-three percent. This year we're in right now, it's going to be sixty-five percent for this next report. So we exceeded the sixty-three percent, that was no problem. The second one that is part of state law is called the funding floor. And what that says is, how much of a revenue you receive, if you had an increase in revenue, you should spend at least as much as you spent the previous year on teacher salaries. So in twenty-four to twenty-five, as far as our state tuition support, we increased basically just over fourteen thousand dollars in revenue. So in statistical measures, pretty stagnant. We did not spend quite as much on full-time teachers in twenty-five as we did in the previous year. And so they're saying, or the point is, we did not meet the funding floor. Now, there's exceptions and waivers for that, which we need, number one, we have a declining enrollment, that's automatically an exception. But we do have to discuss it here at the meeting, post it on our website, that we had this. I can tell you, for us, the difference was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and that was pretty straightforward. When we started doing on-my-way pre-K vouchers and CCDF vouchers, we moved our preschool staff personnel from education fund into the fund line that we received our reinforcements from the state from those vouchers. So that removed them from that state report that pulls this information. And we did that in March, which when Beth went back and ran it, that was around the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's really where it came from. We are moving those people back into education fund now, so that will not be an issue anymore. But it's really just one of those state things that we have to discuss it. There was nothing ulterior going against. We had a huge number of retirements that year of very, very, very veteran staff, and we didn't replace a couple of positions. So again, when you know that you're potentially in a declining enrollment, revenue is not going to continue growing up, you have to start throttling back on what you're spending to, but the amount is really more attributable to probably moving a pretty hefty number of staff into that fund line that we used to pay for pre-K. There's really no action, we just had to discuss it. Any questions? All right. Next is the approval of the twenty-twenty-six public official bond on food service director for hands. And on your notes, I, that should not be first reading, there's no first or secondary reading on this, it's just an action needed. So again, every year, we have several positions in the corporation that have to be bonded, which means that basically it's an insurance plan against if there were ever any embezzlement, fraud, anything along those lines, protection for the district, and really for that individual, too. So food service, because they do handle so much money, Aaron has to be bonded, and so for some reason, we do it for, like, our ECA treasurer and Beth and Lori in July, December, when food service does it. So that's what we're doing tonight, the investigation of that bond, kind of was firing next month. Any questions or comments or motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Darlene, seconded by Wiley, to approve the twenty-six public official bond on food service director Aaron Stewart. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Approve six to zero. Next is the approval of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar. So I did have some conversation with some of you after last month, and so there was a request to see what we could do, if we could get the days to align to make commencement on the twenty-eighth of May, that Friday, instead of June fourth, the next Friday. And talking to the high school, they did feel like we needed at least one more day to ensure that grades could get booked by that Wednesday. There's also a situation that sometimes if some students happen to not statistically make it as graduates, if there's an opportunity to redo some things or retake some things, having a day or two in there helps, just to try to make sure we get as many across that line as we can. And so this, the solution I'm proposing is, we had on, what we had discussed last month was the eighteenth of January, Martin Luther King Day, Venus and Omega Day, that we would have off if we didn't have any missing days, and we were going to make up then, otherwise we would go. I propose that we just can make that a we-go that day, and then get out on the twenty-fourth, which is the other one in green, and then we could have commencement on the twenty-eighth. That is one way we can do that. The other thing that is a little... The other thing that is a little different on here, I was reached out to just yesterday from a couple, from the two other county schools, asking if there was a way we could try to align our waiver days more so. And so the changes that we see on there is in November, we had November 5th as our proposed waiver day. They are wanting to make it November 12th and talking to my team. That was no big deal. That would be fine. We would probably move Career Fair back to that first week in November because the 11th is Veterans Day and we always have a big program. And that's just too many disruptions in that week. The other one that they asked if we would consider moving was in April. We tentatively had it scheduled for the 23rd. They asked if we can move it to April 14th. That was no problem either. In fact, that might be a little better because it's basically the very beginning of the ILM testing window. So it's probably better to have it in that first or second day of the window than in the middle of it and when we're trying to get kids' things made up or all the many, many tests that we have to do. So I guess we had a little bit of conversation. I don't think the waiver day thing's probably a big deal.
I think that feels good to have some volume like that. So I'm pleased to hear that.
So then as far as the commencement date and when we would end?
I do have a concern. I've been trying to squeeze back in for the situations you talked about, getting grades finalized and students that may be crossing the line right at the last minute. Is that putting more pressure than we really need to?
We've done it before, is what guidance feedbacks me. Is it preferable? Maybe not. I would tell you, I do say here, our guidance director or guidance counselors, excuse me, have a really good pulse of what's going on with their kids. And certainly our seniors those last month or two of school of if anyone's getting close. And we have really good senior teachers who are constantly talking that we need to be watching this one or we need to be talking to this one. So those conversations have probably happened. I, I agree that if somebody was just missing and we have to do something that we're trying, again, it doesn't happen very often. I think we still could give it down, is what I'm saying. I don't think it's impossible. Again, we've done it. It makes it a little tight.
I guess part of it is we have some pressure and some of the other guys too. And if we can consider that as well.
I don't have a preference personally.
I like this one better. Do we need any more possible makeup days?
I'm sorry, do you mean what?
She's asking if we need more makeup days.
Oh.
I like having some makeup days in there because that would basically eliminate all but one and none in seconds. That's what I'm running.
Why don't we do a March 19th as a possible makeup day?
I
Yeah, I know it's the pre- for sure to spring break. People may or may not take off anyhow, but.
Well, it would, I don't know that I think that's the, like you said. Some people aren't going to be there, but they weren't going to be there anyway, which is part of the reason I think a lot of schools have started trying to get that off. It can be a fail-safe if we absolutely needed it. Our staff for the most part do e-learning and we do synchronous almost exclusively. But it is nice to have, if we would have, by perchance, a really bad winter sometime. And there's just some point where after being online for so many days in a row, it's not serving in a workplace anymore.
Is there a statement that says we can't go so many days in a row or something?
It's, you can only have three asynchronous days. So synchronous, they don't count. They count, it is a full day present, but asynchronous they count as non. So yeah, that one, I don't know that that's a terrible idea to make it as just a, if we need it, it's there.
So I don't have time to watch the last board meeting now. What was, what's the reason the force not did? Or there was?
There was a question that, I don't know that there's a reason. There were a few more. It wasn't a huge, I think, preference in the survey. What, 38% preferred of staff? The May 28th, 33% in June, and our community, 36% for the May 28th and 32% in June 4th. There are some, I don't think it would usually be an issue, but for our kids who do enlist, usually June 4th would still be protected. But there are some that sometimes they ship out pretty quick after May's over. And then there was a question of family vacations and things like that. I can tell you the only thing that I've had really strong feelings about was the weekend that is Memorial Weekend. They don't like it on that Sunday lots of times. Especially if they follow maybe 500. Do we have any more discussion or?
Wouldn't you say Career Fair?
Yes. Career Fair?
This year's the 14th.
Yeah, this year it's this Friday. It has been the week before. And honestly, the reason they moved it to this Friday is because we have that flex day last week. So I talked to guidance today again, and they said it's, we won't put it on the week that we have the flex day in, but going, we won't go later either because we've gotten caught too many times with bad weather, which, here we go this week, with bad weather.
Sorry, that'd be better though.
We used to have it in February and it got canceled a couple of times. And that's just way too much work to take that chance, especially now with it being tied to graduation requirements. So they were fine with that first week in November. Kind of flip-flopping those, those weeks. So do we want to make a motion to approve the calendar as presented? Or do we want to do something different?
So as it's presented, graduation will be the 20th May?
Well, I just, I have both on there right now. So I just needed a proposal or for which, for which one. Okay.
While we're talking about this graduation.
Well, and then again, I had to, I had to take. So there's been the question of the 18th of January. We would have to, again, take another, we have to take a day out somewhere else that we would actually go. So the 18th was my proposal. And then Darling also proposed that could be, say, the 19th of March is potentially a makeup day. So there's a couple options.
But if we keep it on four, then we not have to do? Are we still saying that we still have to do some makeup days and stuff like that or?
No, that one was kind of the original draft. But again, it's a draft.
If it was June 4th, the only change would be with the waiver day that you set. The to
To match things and stuff.
So then June 4th is still a day off and?
Well, I'll do, no makeup day, yeah.
And then 19th, what do you make up day? I'm just like, the 19th, if you make that a makeup day, you're going to have to make your parents better party planning their vacation. And that's just like
They'll come whether you say it's a day to go to school or not. They'll take, oh, whether you say it's a school day.
Oh, I, I know that. Someone, yeah, we will know, I know that. It will cause an agitation.
Yeah.
But call it a day then if you take away more than the pain.
Right. And there is that
Potential.
Potential as well. And it's, again, we've, historically here, it's been a snow makeup day. So there's been years we've gone. And again, there have been some folks who felt that was not appropriate. Not, we haven't had very much and it's not meant to be anything. Again, if we're here, there's going to be an address of, I don't know, if we can delay from the historical perspective.
Well, I have a graduating senior and I'd love to see it the 28th. I think you'll have more kids involved because they might go out for their vacations yet. They're not starting their college yet. Give them another week and it is harder to pull them all back.
It is, the further it gets away from the last day of school.
And if we have any of those coming to Europe, they traditionally leave the weekend after that, like the 29th.
That's true, we did have them.
There is a trip. I think it's, that's what we do. It depends where it goes.
They usually leave right there.
That is probably a pretty big one. You tell me, it's okay, either way.
I mean, I don't care if it's the 28th. I mean, we've done that, uh, some of the, you know, kind of like that. And I know that guidance doesn't feel like it's going to be a big issue this year. I mean, again, I, I agree with the longer you go, the, you know, kids want to graduate. They're done, they don't want to, they don't want to come back.
Can we be like a little favorite, like a Friday, more Memorial Day?
Couple, then a couple.
We try to, they're coming to vacation and have it all behind them. us and going to...
So do we want to make a motion? I'll put, I'll just put this out as a motion to approve the calendar as presented with the 18th being potential makeup day, leaving the 19th alone and graduation on the 28th.
Do we need to gather the January 18th?
Yeah, we do go. I'm sorry, you're right. Yeah, go on the 18th. Leave the 19th as is, just lose the snow day and then graduation on the 28th. Mark, there's another suggestion.
I want that motion.
Okay. Motion by Joel, seconded by Darlene, to approve the calendar as presented. All those in favor, announce by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approve five to one. Next up, we have approval of donations. First is from the Belmont Dare Program from Walmart and Mr. Planners. So special thanks to Walmart and Mr. Planners for their donation to the Dare Program. And again, special thanks to Officer Hess, who's been very diligent and working ahead to find ways to continue to support financially the Dare Program. He's doing a great job. So we have Walmart donated $200 and Mr. Planners donated $250. And then we also had a donation to Belmont Elementary School in memory of Kelly Shinemary from several individuals, Sharon Wellman, Karen Chichene, Andrew and Christine Gigline, Donna Gigline, Richard and Sue Springer, and we appreciate those donations again. Kelly was very much a light in our school and in her community and our community and there are a lot of people who continue to want to recognize the work she's done and recognize her. We're very appreciative of those folks doing so. Is there a motion to approve the donations as presented?
One.
Motion by Wiley, is there a second? Second, seconded by Darlene, motion by Wiley, seconded by Darlene, to approve the donations as presented. All those in favor, announce by saying aye. Aye. Opposing, aye. Approve six to zero. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
So we did have our second flex day on November 7th and the buildings did a lot with diving into data. I know we had our PSAT scores back and even though they're not able to be released, we are happy with how our students performed on those and we had our first ILM checkpoint. Data came back as well and our cadence screeners for our primary and so the staff spent several hours kind of diving into that data and analyzing it and talking about interventions. Then I met with them and talked about, for those folks who aren't in data, what the rates would look like for everyone, so there was kind of a unilateral understanding as well as rolled out the new tag grant and I don't know that I talked at a board meeting about it, but the state has changed that teacher appreciation grant and so it's now a competitive grant. Staff, mixed feelings on that, certainly want to celebrate staff who have moved to kids' needles and really did, really have done a great job in getting kids to grow. Unfortunately, it's not a perfect grant and that, there's a lot of subject areas that don't necessarily have a metric of norm reference data perhaps to show that growth. That part is unfortunate, I think, because I think there's a lot of teachers in those types of subjects that work really hard too. But maybe hopefully it's something that they improve and we grow in, but we rolled that out, went through that fairly explicitly and so December 29th is when that application window is going to close and we'll start looking at those applications in January. We received our...
How did it seem like they received it so quickly?
They were very quiet. Well, I think they were surprised. In the world of education, you don't necessarily, usually when you're talking about monetary awards, usually it's in terms of hundreds of dollars, a few hundred dollars. And so the stipend amounts were $3,500, $5,000, and $7,500. That, I think, had people, are you kidding me? Wow.
Drop it, Michelle.
Yes. And so there's a lot of processing, I think.
You know, you'll see tips.
I've already had a few people, I've already gotten some applications, I've seen come through on my notifications, so that's good. We did a lot of work, I feel like, ahead of time to try to make it as accessible to folks as possible and try to help them kind of think about data that they could pull and then for those staff who might not have that data or had a metric, some ideas of things they could look at currently this year to be able to apply next year. But we did get our allocation from the state early Friday morning and so as several superintendents across the state had questioned, there really were not enough funds allocated, appropriated by the legislators to cover even the base $3,500 stipend because it was supposed to, you were supposed to have up to 20% of your staff from 24, 25 eligible. That would have put us at like 24. We only received an allocation that would provide enough to cover even at that $3,500 for about 15. And every other school's saying the same thing. So I think there's a little bit of upset on that, but again, I really talked a lot about, I'm a Renee Brown fan and Atlas at the Heart and how jealousy is a normal human emotion and it's fine to feel disappointed or feel resentful because those are normal human emotions, but praise is the foil for that and because someone, they have done a great job and is eligible and gets that stipend, we don't want to be resentful or fail to colla, continue to collaborate and it's not a fault finding thing and it doesn't mean anyone did a poor job, just means there's only this much stuff that is acceptable and it's pretty prescriptive, prescriptive on what is allowable and what's not. So I already know some people, I already saw some wheels turning of things we could do to track our data, which is a good, that's a good thing, something good to start thinking about some of that. So again, it was, I think, a lot of information to process. I wasn't, I thought there would be a lot more questions, but I think I'm going to get them after the fact, after people have been thinking about it and so there's a lot
I also wanted to give a big kudos to our seventh grade boys' football team who won conference and that was very exciting for them and I think that championship game was hugely exciting as well. So very proud of them and first time in school history and they're excited to get their banner up in the middle school gym and can't wait to see that. Girls' soccer, again, had a great postseason run and congratulations to them. Girls' volleyball for being up a class in 4A and winning our sectional, that's pretty outstanding and very excited for them. We talked about our athletic signers, testing, we have been in testing mode again with our dyslexia screen, our cadence is the new one, as well as our ILM checkpoint one. And so that data's just coming back and it's looking really good and a lot of the new things we've been putting in place are showing positive. Had some brave days right there around Halloween and that was a really busy, fun, full moon. Thank goodness Halloween was on Friday. Today, the high school had their Veterans Day program and again, that's kind of ran through the social studies department and our topics in history class with a lot of our students in those classes leading it and all of our student speakers did a great job. I've heard nothing but positives about, just, they always just do a top-notch job. I all, it's one of the better, I think, Veterans Day programs around, so I encourage any veteran, if you don't already have some place that's near and dear to your heart and you want to go experience that, come on down. We provide lunch and our food service department provided lunch this year, so that was really nice and well. Friday, we are having, the high schools having their career fair and they have over 80 different businesses, colleges, agencies going to be present there, so we've built two gyms now.
Looking forward to that, because we'll be...
Yeah. Yes, it's a great, and we get a lot of compliments on our kids those days and our guidance counselors and admin and teachers work really hard. Again, we, it's not, it probably, we get a lot of compliments on our kids from the mentors about how well prepared they are, how well spoken they are, but we do a lot of work with them about, the counselors make them pick three either agencies, organizations, colleges that you are interested in and you have to come up with questions to go ask them and you have to ask them and get signed off that you have those questions answered. Yeah, they have an opportunity to get a prize, but again, it's also teaching them good interpersonal skills, to dress nicely, I mean, we're not expecting a suit and tie on those days, but to be very well groomed and again, how to interact appropriately with a business person is kind of a pre-interview type training is how we look for it. And some kids do, again, make some good networking things, whether it's a summer job or an internship, so it's always a great day for that. And then November 21st, the high school is going to have their second, now annual seniors with senior breakfast where the grandkids can come in and have breakfast with their senior students.
When is that?
November 21st. I don't know the time, but they should be sending that out soon. Probably send them out with seniors that aren't telling their...
We'll never get, I'll be...
I'm sure Katie's going to be sending that out to parents here soon. It was really, we knew it would probably be something that the grandparents would like, but I think we were surprised about Katie's comment was, that was just the sweetest thing I cannot imagine, was just to see, number one, those grandparents were just beaming and so were their seniors, their senior students. They, it was a sweet, just to see the sweet relationships with some of them and those grandparents, I think, really enjoyed getting to come and be included again. I mean, they got, they get to, we donate for grownups when they're in little elementary school, but high school, they don't get that many opportunities to get called up again and so it was really just sweet. It was just sweet. So we look forward to that one. I'm sure there's other things I'm missing with, but the holidays are coming, believe it or not, and hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving, won't see you before Thanksgiving, but we all do have a wonderful... Wonderful Thanksgiving. I don't know too much. Or do. That's part of the fun. That's all I can. Okay. Any other matters to come before the board? No? All right. Before we go, probably comment?
I have, Kim and I went to the fall regional meeting. I did pick up a couple extras, if anyone wants to, for their reading or a couple of things that I, I thought I wanted to point out and Dave will be interested in this, of the, where is it at? On TIF, they're proposing that the board member have voting rights. So that's, that's one thing, you know, legislating priorities. And I guess that was probably one of the, that stood out most too. Also, they're continuing for deregulation of laws to kind of take it a little more easy on school districts and not, some of the requirements that really are mundane and not really necessary. So, and I think legislators are somewhat serious about trying to slim that down, so that was another area. And then Indiana School Board Association has kind of moved itself away from the National School Board Association and, but what I'm now, we're now affiliated with is the National Conference Education Evolution.
Okay.
So, and the conference for this is March 13th through the 15th in Louisville, so that's fairly close by. It might, you know, I'm thinking about in April and I just want to bring that to everyone's attention too.
Thank you.
But anyone wants to take?
I'd like to. They're anticipating a relatively short?
Yeah, but we've played that in the past too.
I keep hearing that the redistricting of the congressional states discussion has really taken a lot of energy and a lot of their bandwidth right now in making some of those decisions. Maybe there won't be a lot of education bills this time.
Yeah, maybe. I did look at how many there were this last year and it was, one of them, I don't know if it was a record, but it was...
It has to be the last couple of years because just look at our policy. I'm not even halfway through one. Yeah. Pretty impressive. Okay. Anything else? All right. The meeting.